To state their name and address if they'd like to speak as well. So Holly, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right, Holly's ready, so that means it's time to begin the meeting. And welcome to the May twenty-six, twenty-twenty city council meeting. And before we get started, the first thing we really need to do is we need to have a motion for consideration and possible action regarding suspending our rules as far as being physically present for the city council meetings. And I would entertain a motion to do that.
So move.
Second. Motion by Johnson. Is your second?
Yes, highly.
A second by highly. All right, and the reason we need to do this is our emergency order only lasted for sixty days. And believe it or not, we've, we've reached that. And I know this will be a subject that we'll be speaking more about and eventually at Community Affairs Council Policy. So basically what we're doing for tonight is suspending the rules, which will allow us to have this meeting virtually. Any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you very much. Next item is the roll call, Holly.
Orsma.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
Doom. Doom. Riley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Ladaki.
Here.
Mieski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
And then is Alder Doom here yet?
Yes, I had my mic off. Sorry, Holly, I'm here.
Okay, that's okay. There are twelve elders present.
All right, thank you. Next item of business is Stoughton City Council twenty-twenty goals and initiatives. And I think all the council president Hirsch wants to speak to this one.
Sure, um, I think we're trying to go into the tradition that actually Mayor Swadley started a few years ago when he was council president and past president Mieski started, continued the last couple of years. Is that, you know, we've all been on a number of these committees and on council for a while, except for Fred and welcome Fred, and we've thought about and we've talked about looking at different ordinances and changing them or policies or what have you, and we've talked about it. So what we're asking is that you to write down things that you would like to work on this year, whether it's in the committee that you're in or not, and we'll get it to the appropriate committee. And so that we can have a year of action this year, like we did a few years ago, where we really got a lot done because people elders really identified things that they wanted to work on, things that they thought needed to be improved, things that needed to be changed. For instance, I've been hearing, like when we were talking about the wetlands at Kettle Park, it was a couple of weeks ago, some of you guys chimed in, said it would be really nice to have a wetland ordinance. Well, let's work on that. One of you also have said over the years, you know, they don't like the way retention ponds are built and how that is eyesore. So let's, you know, revisit how retention ponds are approved. There's a lot of new and different communities throughout Wisconsin that they're doing a more natural looking retention pond. So it's serves as an ecological resource as well as retention pond. Others had told me that they'd like to revisit, you know, the fluoride in our water, you know, and then also how do we interface with the school board? So there's all these different things that people have said over the past couple of years. Let's write everything down that you've been talking about or used in your campaign promises and send Holly and I a list of things that you would like to work on this year. I think it could be a really cool year if people, we start putting our heads together and really changing things and helping our leadership team change things for the better of our community. So if by next meeting, if you guys can just send Holly and I an email with your ideas of what you'd like to improve, what some of your goals are, some initiatives you'd like to start, send them to us. And that's about it.
All right, any questions from any council members? Okay, hearing none. Next, we have an update from Director Ramsey from the library. And Jim, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. All right, I will be brief because I know you have a full agenda, but I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I know all of you on the council, most of you know me, but for those of you who are here and don't know me, my name is Jim Ramsey. I'm the director of the Stoughton Public Library, have been for about a year. So I was talking to the mayor the week before last, and he thought it might be a good idea for me to just address the council, talk about the library, how we've been dealing with the present situation. And as much as possible, sketch out what our plans are for the future. So I just want to start off by reviewing the timeline of the libraries' response to the COVID-nineteen crisis, talk about the library services that we've been able to provide during this time and where we are now, and then, like I said, look a little bit at the future. This pandemic is difficult for everyone. As far, as far as libraries are concerned, it's especially difficult because many of the services and functions that we consider central to our mission as a public place have been rendered unsafe for the time being. Normally, we promote the library as a place to gather, place to meet, place for people to learn new things, meet their neighbors, exchange ideas and information, kind of town square. Our building is set up to encourage people to linger, to meet with others in smaller to large groups, and to attend programs, both large and small. All of these things will absolutely happen again. But for the foreseeable future, our building and our services are going to look quite different. As you know, we decided on, well, I decided on March thirteenth to close the library to the public effective the Sunday, March sixteenth. We started that week of March ninth out, like everybody else, just kind of waiting and watching, realizing that this cases of COVID-nineteen were increasing locally and around the country. But things moved very quickly that week. We went from canceling our programs to to closing our doors within the space of a few days. This is not a decision that I acted lightly. The job of the public library is to serve the public, to be open to the public, and to provide the community with access to information. But in this unprecedented health emergency, I felt that this was the best course of action and decisive action was needed. So luckily, our library board had created a policy called the Epidemic and Health Emergency Policy to deal with a situation like this, so I was able to use that policy to guide my decisions during this time. So in the early days of closure, most staff continued to report for duty. But as the orders from health officials became more and more strict, we eliminated most of the staff in the building, save for myself and a few managers coming in to take care of things. And there we kind of stayed until the amended safer at home order on April sixteenth that allowed for curbside pickup. And so while we prepared to start offering curbside pickup of library materials, we, we did that whilst you're still adhering to social distancing guidelines. Curbside pickup went live on May fourth, and we've done over four hundred pickups since then. So the way it works is people call us or they place a hold through the library website. And then we pull the hold, they get notified usually by email that it's available. And then they call us in a range of times to pick up their holds. So we've been hearing from a lot of people that they're very grateful to have this service back, and we're happy to provide it. We originally envisioned doing this three days a week, but quickly expanded to six days a week, Monday through Saturday to accommodate demand. Since the closure, many members of our staff have been working from home. Many on our staff are providing virtual programming. Our children's librarian Amanda Bosky and our children's intern have been creating storytimes and other activities for kids. Our teen librarian Cynthia Schlegel and her intern have been hosting virtual book clubs and weekly meetups for young people. For some of our staff, especially those involved in providing service at our service desks and in handling library materials, working from home has not been an option. Their daily tasks depend on a steady flow of people and library materials through the building. Our library substitutes, those staff members who fill in as needed, and our service desks and allow other staff members to do things like programming have been essentially furloughed because we don't, we don't have work for them with the library, with the building closed. With the addition and now the startup of curbside pickup, we have all staff now working in the library in some capacity, with the exception of the library shelters. Though this closure of the building has meant reduced hours and reduced workloads for some. Staff have been reassigned to other tasks where possible, and we've even taken on tasks in other departments. I know several of us are still delivering for Meals on Wheels. And another group of us did yard work for the senior centers through the Helping Hands program. So we've been trying to, to help out and pitch in wherever, wherever needed. It's going to be a long, slow road back to some kind of normal. But I feel that the more deliberate we are, ultimately, the quicker we'll be able to return to normal, to turn that dial. Which brings me to the future, which is the last part of my little talk here. So I appreciate you bearing with me. Though a lot's still uncertain, we've been planning almost from the beginning for the day when we might be able to reopen our doors to the public. And to guide us in turning that dial back to a new normal, we've been using a document from the Department of Public Instruction called the Guidelines for Reopening Wisconsin Public Libraries. For those of you who don't know, the Department of Public Instruction, the DPI, same department that oversees the public schools, also oversees the sixteen libraries, public library systems in the state. This document is described by the DPI as a living document, subject to continuous revision. But it lets us know and gives us a guide, so we know which library services are available or which library services we can provide at different levels of the Badger Bounce Back Program, and now also, as you know, through the Forward Dane Program. So with Dane County entering Phase One today of the Forward Dane Plan, libraries in the county are preparing to partially reopen, albeit at twenty-five percent capacity in the limited spaces and services. We don't yet have a date set for a partial reopening, but we hope to determine that in the coming weeks. I've also been meeting regularly with directors in Dane County of other public libraries. And though each public library is independent, governed by its own Board of Trustees, we are training for some level of coordination among libraries when it comes to resuming services. Virtual programming, that I already mentioned, our online storytimes, our summer reading program that will be conducted almost entirely online, meetings of book groups. I'm working with UW right now to put together some lectures by UW professors that we were going to have here at the library, but that we're now going to broadcast on WSTO and make available for streaming. So we're adapting, we're adapting our programs to meet the, the current situation. In considering our reopening plan, our top priority is going to be staff and patron safety. Our turning of the dial is going to be deliberate, decisive, measured, and appropriately cautious. We're going to constantly evaluate the situation and pay attention to data and recommendations by state and local health authorities. Our plan, of course, is to gradually increase services bit by bit, when it's safe to do so. Always mindful, of course, that we might have to pull back if the situation changes. When we partially reopen, our buildings and our services will look very different for a while. But our core values will be the same. Education, literacy, free access to information, free exchange of ideas, preservation of our community's history, cultural heritage, and the creation and fostering of community. My main takeaway that I want you to, that I'd like you to take away from this is the more careful we are now, the more deliberate we are now, and the more planning and deliberation that we conduct in these early stages, the quicker we'll be able to return to normal. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have about the library and our operations at this time. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Are there any questions from council members? Okay, thank you very much. Hearing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. And the minutes and reports are in the packet. So the next item would be a public comment period. And I do have a few people signed up for a public comment tonight, and I'll try to unmute as I can. It looks like the first one is Jessica Royko, and just give me a moment, and I'll unmute you, Jessica, and then you can speak.
I think Jessica signed up for the public hearing for the special assessments if I'm.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that. So I have two others set to speak for public comment period. I have Carol Clark, and I believe Carol called in, so I'm not really sure which caller she is. So I'm going to unmute a few people here. And then hopefully we'll figure out if Carol is on the line here.
I'm on the line, and I actually wanted to address the Quick Trip. And I, I have, the councilman have my, I sent it by email to them, my comments.
Okay.
Also to Mr. Shield, Shield and Mayor.
All right. And so you have three minutes to speak, and then we, this isn't a conversation, it's just an opportunity for you to speak. So there really won't be any, you know, back and forth, but certainly some of the questions or comments that you have may be addressed later. So whenever you're ready, you can go ahead.
I got all the information that I could from the city, the previous city council meetings, have surveyed a lot of people in our neighborhood close to, in vicinity to the new location for the Quick Trip. And what I've noticed is that there's a lot of people here that really are against building, and there's many, many already conditions that are required, but I've added a bunch more that I think really are important for that busy intersection. Actually, I would really like, I really would like it better.
So I put them on the screen so the council members, if they didn't see them in their email, they can certainly take a look at them. But you could certainly speak to a few for your three minutes.
Actually, that says it all.
Okay, all right, so you have nothing else to add?
No, thank you, but thank you for considering.
No, we appreciate you taking the time to put this document together. We have two items that are on for the agenda tonight that we'll speak to, and then there will also be a discussion at a future Plan Commission meeting. So we'd certainly invite you to tune in for that one as well.
So do you ever put out flyers to people to notify them about these meetings and when something that's going to be significant to your neighborhood? It would have been nice if we would have gotten previous notification of this, other than tuning into a city council meeting that we didn't even know it was being, it was being addressed at.
I could just tell you quickly that we have an ordinance, and I believe that we notify residents within.
Three hundred feet is not adequate. That was two houses.
That's something else that the city council could take under consideration going forward.
That would be a great idea.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else you want to add?
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mayor, can, Mayor, can you hear me? This is Riley. I've been speaking, but I'm not, I didn't get a response.
I can hear you now, and I'm.
Okay, good. All right, then I'm, I'm good. Thank you. Move on.
Okay. All right, and the next person I have signed up is Brad. And I'll see, oh, it looks like Brad is, I just have to unmute you. And maybe Brad, did you mute yourself? I might have. There, can you hear me now? Three minutes. Thanks for coming tonight. Hey, thank you. I just want to talk in support of, of Carol Clark. There are forty homes down in this area. And she has gone and talked to people in every one of those homes. No one is real happy about this Quick Trip being up there, at least the way it's been situated and what they're doing. Our big concern in, in a meeting from April twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty, in a paragraph, they talked about the conditional use, and it says it does not result in a substantial or undue adverse impact on nearby properties, the character of the neighborhood, environmental factors, traffic factors, rights of way. If, if we don't, if you don't believe that it's going to affect the traffic in that area, then you've never seen or been by a, a Quick Trip, obviously, because it is going to affect the traffic in that area. That intersection is not designed such that putting something in that area is going to, it's going to create congestion, it's going to create some unsafe conditions. My other concern is basically got to do with routing commercial traffic to a residential street. Cedar Brook, which is the street that they plan to use to put egress traffic from their location. The traffic will only exit coming out of there going north on end. Anyone wanting to go north south on end, anyone wanting to get back to fifty-one is going to have to come out on Cedar Brook. This is going to create an awful lot of traffic on Cedar Brook, which is, which is a residential street. My suspicion is the reason that this was done was that Quick Trip didn't want to have to worry too much about getting out on the end or out on the fifty-one. I know that that would be a, a big problem for them, that trying to route traffic onto fifty-one was going to put them in a pinch with the state, trying to deal with the state. But I think having that traffic coming out on the fifty-one or out to Cedar Brook is a pretty poor way to, to make traffic go through there. All forty of these houses, most of them have to come out on the Cedar Brook to get on to end, to get out of our resident, our residential area. It's going to create a, a big mess there, and then people turning off of Cedar Brook out to end going south, it's going to be a real issue because there's a hill right below that. It's sort of a blind spot. So I believe that Carol's delineation of her, her conditions addressed some of those, but if it was at all possible to figure out a different way to handle the traffic coming out of there, it would be awfully nice to see that done. That's basically all I have. All right, thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your feedback. Great, thank you. Okay, the next item is our consent agenda. And there are several items in the consent agenda. Would entertain a motion to approve it.
Go to approve.
Second. Motion by highly, a second by Johnson. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? We have minutes. We have citizens' appointments to committees. We have operator license, and we have items from Stoughton Utilities. Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Next item is the, is the public hearing to consider special assessments for improvement of curb and gutter, retaining wall sidewalks, driveway aprons, carriage walks, drainage improvements, sewer constructions, hand railing, sanitary sewer and water main extensions for the twenty-twenty projects. And as I mentioned before, I think we had one person signed up, and that was Jessica Royko. And if I can find Jessica again, I'll unmute her. And is there anything you want to cover, Rodney, before we go into the public comment part of the?
I can go over the three segments if we wanted to talk about each section that's covered in this, or that's included in the packet, if, if they're comfortable with it being in the packet.
Council have a preference?
I'm comfortable with what's in the packet.
I am as well.
Okay, and perhaps some questions will come up as we go through this. So I'll close the regular meeting and then reopen the public hearing, and then Jessica, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. So I, in fairness, I only found out about what I'm going to talk about an hour ago. But I, my understanding is that my neighbors on McKinley Street are going to be getting a sidewalk. And I attended a meeting, I don't know, the initial meeting where we kind of, you probably all remember, lots of people from the neighborhood came out and spoke against altering this historic neighborhood. I know there was a vote, and it was agreed at that time that a one-size-that-sall approach would not be imposed on our neighborhood. I also understand that since that meeting, it was decided that Grant Street was getting some sidewalks, and people knew about that, but people did not know about McKinley Street. And I followed the sidewalk plan, you know, very closely, talking to my neighbors. I've read about it in the hub. And I don't think anybody had any idea that this was taking place. And my understanding is also that it came down to a tie vote, a tie-breaking vote, and it wasn't in a public forum, so I'm pretty stunned about that. Because after all that dialogue and after all these people questionably live here, who came out and spoke saying that we don't need nor do we want sidewalks, that I feel like the city's trying to pull a fast one and slide this in under the radar, and I'm very disappointed. So I would really like you guys to consider losing those sidewalks on McKinley Street, let our historic neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood that's dead-end streets, it doesn't go anywhere. Let it maintain that character, let the people who live here decide what we want our neighborhood to look like. And I just think if this is, this feels like it was snuck in, and I think it's unacceptable, and I think you guys can be better than this. So that's all I have to say.
All right, well, thank you for taking the time to speak tonight.
Yeah, I wish, I, I wish I had known more. I wish I'd had more time. And I think we could have had a lot more people here because.
It's possible you'll hear more about it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, this is Riley. I hate to interrupt, but are we going to be discussing this in more detail tonight? Because I have thoughts on it as well.
Oh, yes.
There's some other council members, I think. Yeah.
After we finish the public hearing, there is, you know, a resolution on there as the next item, so.
Right, thank you.
All right, so that was the only person I had signed up for the public hearing, unless you had somebody else, Holly. I didn't see any others.
I didn't see any others come through.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and reopen for our regular business. And the next item for business is R eighty-five. And that is the resolution that came through the, the Finance Committee. So if I just put up the wrong thing, here it is. R eighty-five came from Finance. Alder Person, Schumacher.
All right, R eighty-five twenty-twenty Resolution Authorizing Improvements and Leaving Special Assessments Against Benefited Properties in the City of Stoughton For the Improvement of Curb and Gutter Sidewalks, Driveway Aprons, Carriage Walks, Retaining Walls, Sanitary Store Storms, Storm Sewer and Water System Improvements for Twenty-Twenty Projects, and I so move.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, you know, a lot of this stuff, we've, we've talked about quite a bit here. But by going by what, from the public hearing, that some things may be not known about quite as well. I think it would just be best to really open this up for the discussions based on the items that are contained in the resolution. Based on the items that are contained in the resolution at this stage.
Okay.
Mayor, could we, uh, Mayor, could we have Rodney kind of go over what has changed and if McKinley has changed over the course of the time? Just so we are on the same page.
Sure, and I think Rodney has been in conversation with many of the property owners. So certainly some of the questions that some of the neighbors may have, he may be able to answer during his uh presentation. Um, do you want to walk through this? Do you want me to make you the presenter Rodney? What would you like to do here?
I can become the presenter, but first of all, I'll just speak to what you have on the screen, Mayor. Um, thank you. Um, there were three things you'll recall, we took bids or had bids for uh the pulverization project that were awarded at the last council meeting. There were two changes to the resolution that would be necessary because we didn't know, we did not accept the alternative bid. For that project, so the portion of Roby Road from Johnson Street to Van Buren Street. Will not be included in part of the, as part of the special assessment, so that would be deleted from this. The other one was Harrison Court was removed from the project scope as well. I discussed those through the finance committee last meeting. And then the last change that I that I announced to the finance committee was that Grant Street. In the north block between McKinley and Taff was narrowed by four feet on the western edge. Um, spoke with both both of the adjacent owners and um. Came to came to understand that there was a desire to have that narrowed by a slight amount. Uh, we narrowed it by four feet. We pushed the sidewalk out closer to the curb and gutter and it allowed us to actually move around the thirty inch tree to the north. Um, on the street side as opposed to onto the private property side, so. Those are the three project scope changes that I wanted to highlight. I would like to respond to to the concern that was raised about the um addition of sidewalks. On the north side of Prospect Street and I think it's important to maybe if you could share the screen, Mayor, or allow me to. To uh highlight something I think I can share.
It's all yours and while you're booting that up, so it looks like what we'll have to do is when we're at a point. Uh, for consideration, it looks like we'll need to amend. Uh, this resolution here for the three items that uh Director Shield just discussed. So we can do that when we get a little further in this process. Uh, go ahead Rodney.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, only the first two would need to be amended in the resolution, the width of the Grant Street. It is just a notation of the change in the plans, but it doesn't change the assessment schedule. Um, so one of the things that was raised was how were sidewalks removed from the project? Um, people might recall that we spent some time with the different committees, Public Works and also Castle. Talking about sidewalks and what was going to be excluded. This illustration was actually part of the resolution, resolution seventeen of this year. That depicts the areas that identified where sidewalks were going to be deleted from the project by waiving the the rules of the policy. Sherman Street shown on the left side of the screen here was um acknowledged as not having any sidewalks. Grant Street as shown here in the center of the page was acknowledged to only have sidewalks on the western um side of the street. And then on this graphic or this page, it shows from Grant Street to McKinley Street. There was no sidewalks in that northern that northern block. That continues, all three of those continue to be the case. The inclusion that was highlighted by um the speaker during the public hearing speaks to this property right here. This property is right at the the intersection, if you will, of Prospect and McKinley. It was not part of the exclusion discussion specifically. Um, and I'll actually show you on the on the plan set how that how that actually looks. So we we did discuss the modified intersection at McKinley Street. So McKinley Street is along. Uh, the top of the page and will intersect in the Prospect Street. The sidewalk section shown in yellow is the piece of sidewalk that's being installed to create the continuous accessible route. This cul-de-sac has sidewalks going all the way around it, that terminate approximately at this point where the yellow starts. The sidewalk would be then continued to this intersection to have this. Um, accessible ramp crossing at an intersection. So that that's really, in in my opinion, not a change or an add because a deviation from policy did not exclude sidewalks from this this part of the project, so. Um, I think I'm comfortable in 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 what I've presented along the way and been very consistent on that. So if if there's a confusion about it, I apologize, but I certainly don't think that this specific. Segment of sidewalks was ever not intended to be installed and if it was, that's my mistake. As recall, the entire cul-de-sac has sidewalks all the way around. And in this case, if we didn't install them, they terminate mid-block at this point. Instead of having a route for an accessible crossing at a controlled intersection. Another change I was going to highlight was the revised Grant Street. Uh, again, this is not a change in the assessment schedule, but it is a change to the plans that's in that are in the engineering documents you've you've been provided. This is the northern block of Grant Street. The curb and gutter was shifted to the east uh by four feet. So it narrowed the width of the street by four feet. Will still allow parking on the western or on the eastern side or the western side. Um, but then it shifts the sidewalk and you'll see the thirty inch tree now will then go around the tree on the street side as opposed to on the backside of it. Under the property side, so that modification um was was incorporated into the plans that we're moving forward with right now. I'm available for questions if there's other, if there's questions.
Uh, the other thing I would add is there was a little bit of uh confusion about what transpired at the meetings. So what I did is I looked up the minutes um at a council person's request and I consolidated. So there was two separate meetings where there were different actions. Which I have on the screen right now, so these were at public meetings. The first one is, you might recall. Um, we had authorized doing the road work without. Any sidewalks on Grant Street and then we came back because there was a a reconsideration to do the sidewalks. On Grant Street and that's where the tie vote occurred uh whether or not we should reconsider that and that was at a council meeting. And unfortunately, I had to vote on that one, but we voted to allow a discussion for reconsideration and after all that. There was a vote to uh to add the Grant Street, the one side back on. Uh, which affected three property owners. So that was really a question that came up earlier tonight from the speaker as far as. You know, how that discussion occurred and that was at a public city council meeting. Um, and there was a, you know, a vote taken and, you know, we. We designed and engineered it based on that vote. And then, as you can see, some additional work was done on Grant Street in order to narrow the road. Um, and it seems like the property owners are okay with that. So we've been trying to accommodate the concerns and it's really. Part of what we've heard this week was there's a little bit of confusion as far as that one property on McKinley. Uh, whether or not that was always meant to have a sidewalk and you can see that it was. There wasn't much discussion about that particular property as I can recall at Public Works. Or at the council when we're talking about reconfiguring the road there. Uh, but I think you can see why it was engineered to have a crosswalk there with the reconfiguration. It would make sense to do that. So I, having said that, um, I'll certainly, you know, open up the floor. If any council members want to speak to the motion on the floor.
I'll speak if I might, Mayor. This is Riley. Okay, a couple of things. One, let me say this, there were two votes actually where we defunded sidewalks, not just one vote. And then the reconsideration, there were two votes where we defeated funding for the sidewalks, at least as I understood what sidewalks there were to be. They were revised, a Grant Street was added, uh, that was defeated and then on a reconsideration. Uh, from Mr. Caravelo, it then finally passed. So Grant Street's done. And let me say this too, uh, to preface. Rodney, thank you and I want to thank the committee and I want to thank Rodney for adjusting the Grand Street project to bump it out four feet. I really appreciate that. It certainly makes it. You know, at least more palatable than it otherwise was, so thank you for that work. Uh, one of the things I think that is going on here again is this is that. We think we're transparent, but we're not somehow or another how we are doing things and I don't think it's purposeful necessarily. But we're not transparent. Honestly, I I had no idea and again, it was two separate plans, I guess. I thought what we were dealing with, guys, when we dealt with defunding the sidewalks and the SIP because I wasn't allowed to address the policy. To the committee was just just this neighborhood and that's part of the neighborhood, so. I missed something. Um, again, I don't, I'm not saying that somebody's being purposely deceitful or anything like that. But it's a situation where somehow or another, when I'm involved in this, to the degree I am, when other council members are involved in this. To the degree that they are and we have no earthly idea that suddenly we're putting like a ten foot or something, I don't know, it sounds like kind of a large project. Uh, on a cul-de-sac where there's no traffic, a a crosswalk in a neighborhood on a cul-de-sac where there is no traffic. Uh, and we didn't even know it. Um, uh, it it's just, it's it befuddles me. I I just don't understand. How the heck that happens and honestly, the project, you know, i- it seems silly. It is a waste of money, i- it is a waste of time, it is, again, uh, this is my personal opinion, I know I'm not a city planner. But my God, there's there's no traffic there, there's the pedestrian traffic, actually, as I said, when I've argued against this in the past. Enjoys this neighborhood for its nature, for its unique characteristics. There's no need for what we're putting there and I suspect that it's going there and then all of a sudden it's going to be. Let's put sidewalks all the way up to Page, you know, McKinley all the way up to Page. Let's put a sidewalk there. Because after all, we extended the cul-de-sac. The the cul-de-sac, I think, is fairly new buildings. And I think that's the reason that there were sidewalks there. I don't know, someone else could speak to that better than I could, but that's my thought as to why they're there. But there's no point to this. It it does not make any earthly sense to me at all. And then also, we, you know, uh, President Hirsch, I think we need to discuss how the hell it is that we. Get this information out to people because, you know, I was, I I thought I was pretty on top of this. I missed that. Uh, I spoke to councilperson Borisma. He feels that this was, you know, not that people didn't know about it. But people in this neighborhood clearly didn't know about it, so again, nobody's doing anything purposely here, I know that. But boy, it's it's not good. Um, I have comments, of course, about the assessment on Grant, but I'll save those, I think, because should I save that for the next uh resolution, Mayor? Because that's where we're voting on the assessments themselves.
I believe that's, I believe that's where we're at now. How about if we go around and come back to you in case somebody else wants to speak to this?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments on on this part?
Uh, I would just like to reiterate that if Alder Person Riley, I mean, he's very passionate about this and this is exactly. What I'm looking for, for other people to work on. In the coming years, so if you could write that up and you could try to get it to the appropriate um committee to work on in the the coming years, so. We have more transparency and we can fix whatever is, you know. It's a perceived problem right now or is a problem, so let's revisit it and let's look at it. And so we have the right policies in place, so people don't feel like we're not transparent, so. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. May I just say one quick thing, Mayor, and I know you're going to come back to me, but I just thought I would note uh uh President that I have. A proposed revision to the sidewalk policy with respect to these types of situations when we're retrofitting or building in older neighborhoods. I have, I believe that Councilperson Boris, at least kind of made the Public Works Committee aware of it, so that I have now drafted it there. I'll be happy to try and figure out something with respect to how the heck we get public notice out on some of these other things. Thank you. That's that's, just wanted to mention that.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts about that? Okay, hearing none, uh, was there anything else uh that you wanted to add, Alder Person Riley, in regards to the special assessment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, again, I'll I'll revisit briefly the the tortured history of this and that is, of course, as all of you well know, except for um Fred. Um, because he wasn't there. Um, you know, obviously, my neighborhood and I opposed sidewalks in this neighborhood. Uh vehemently because there was no justification for them, given pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic. On an econo- on an economic basis, it was foolish, it was a waste of money, it is detrimental to the environment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So my neighborhood showed up and vociferously opposed this it by a vast majority. And after three votes, the council decided to uh to pass it on Grant Street. And again, thank you Rodney and the committee for adjusting that. I mean that sincerely. Uh, having said that, what I heard constantly during the debate. On this sidewalk issue in this particular neighborhood was. It's a community matter, it's a community matter, it's good for the city, we want the city to be walkable, city, city, community, community. That's fine, but there's no real benefit to my property as far as I'm concerned, none at all. There is a benefit from the street. There is a benefit from the curb and gutter. There is a benefit from the storm uh and storm sewers, et cetera. That is all beneficial to my property and I'll certainly pay my fair share on that. I I object to being uh asked to pay for a sidewalk. That is there apparently from all the arguments I heard during our council meetings for the benefit of the city. It is not an ipso facto benefit to my property because it is there. Its mere existence doesn't justify it as a benefit. And if it's not a benefit to the adjoining property owner and only a benefit really, a benefit for the community at large. So that adjacent property owner shouldn't be footing the bill for it, um, or part of the bill for it, I should say. So I I object to that assessment for that reason and that reason only. It's really a pro forma objection because I don't expect it. To really go anywhere, but I really needed to say it. Um, this does not benefit this property. If it's a benefit to the city as as argued regularly during our debates, well, then that's fine. But it shouldn't be assessed against the individual property owners that are that are uh going to have the sidewalk, so there you go. That's it.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Sid Borisma.
Sure, go ahead Sid.
Uh, so uh I have been working on this over the last number of days because I really did not know about this. Uh, and I'm on Public Works and somehow that was missed by me and I apologize for that to all the neighbors. Uh, about that, I I have no idea how I missed it. Um, however, we have had a number of discussions about the fact that. Uh, with the with the number of people that came to the the meeting is that they did not want sidewalks. On uh our, in our neighborhood and um finally, the the, there was a very close vote. For uh including Grant Street, but the understanding, there was no understanding that there was going to be a sidewalk. Uh, I don't think anybody in the neighborhood, with the exception of maybe one, uh, which which is the. Are the are the people who's uh going to have to pay a significant amount of money for a sidewalk that basically goes. To nowhere, it's just going to be a crosswalk up to a crosswalk. Um, I I, this is not small potatoes and um I I did talk to the property owner. Um, their assessment is going to be four thousand four hundred and sixty nine dollars and seventy nine cents for sidewalk, work gutter. Uh, carriage walk, concrete apron, miscellaneous items, uh, which is outrageous because it is not needed. Uh, it is, uh, I understand that it may be uh, uh, something that is going to be have to be attached to. Uh, going up McKinley, which is going to again be, uh, I think, opposed by the neighbors. Um, I think that that may be an intention to have that sidewalk connect. Uh, but but it's really not connecting to anything except a crosswalk through through a street that's being redone. Um, I uh, I did talk to uh the constituents and I I think that they are opposed to it. I don't think that they know that they can do anything about it. I said that I told them this afternoon that I would try my hardest to try to get a good resolution of this. I looked at the minutes, the minutes are running clear from from a meeting that was held, I believe, and. Uh, let's see, I think it was in February. Uh, and and it was my understanding that most, most people, including people in a neighborhood and people on council. Understood that the sidewalk construction that was going to happen in our neighborhood was going to be on Grant Street and Grant Street only. Uh, so I object to this uh strenuously that that uh is going to happen. I think it's unnecessary. Totally unnecessary. I'm with, I'm very much with uh Alder Riley on this uh and the neighbors uh as well as uh. Um, as the constituents who are going to have to pay almost five thousand dollars for this project, which is going to be of no use whatsoever in our neighborhood. for this project, which is going to be of no use whatsoever in our neighborhood. So that's my talk about it. I would like to present that if this is a situation and we can't resolve this, that I'm going to do a motion to reconsider or do an amendment.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Earlier on in finance, we did talk about point four in there about the the way that can be paid in there, whether it's installments and the money thresholds and that. Those are in ongoing discussions in the Finance Committee now.
Okay. Anybody else? Sure.
I have a question. It's a financial question directed to Brett. Is it possible to ever put a ceiling or a cap on the amount that someone could be assessed?
That I'm not sure of, because I think our policies are clear on that in that it's usually, it's paid on a shared percent amount. And without knowing what amounts will be per construction, I don't, I'm not sure about that. I mean, I guess it's feasible. Rodney'd be able to tell you more about that one, I believe.
Brett, actually, I think we did something like that a couple of years ago when a retention wall with somebody in District Three was going to be like, I think it was close to $17,000, and we did cap it. And so...
Okay. Okay.
That was the one on Jerkson Street?
Oops, sorry.
I say that was a property on Jerkson Street?
Yep, I know that one. I talked to that neighbor.
Mayor, might I make one more quick comment?
Sure.
You can hear me? Thank you.
Yes.
You know, again, with respect to the transparency thing here on this, I looked at the Publicary Notice Meeting for tonight, and honestly, unless I am missing it and just running over it, I don't see where that little bizarre thing that we're now doing on McKinley at the cul-de-sac is noted in that notice. Now, again, I apologize if I'm missing it. I'm missing it, but I don't see it articulated as a definitive item anywhere. Again, that just speaks to this, you know, concern I have that, you know, people aren't aware of what it is that we're doing here. And even if it's there and I'm missing it, somebody correct me, okay? I didn't see it. And of course, the woman earlier tonight, who was speaking about the quick trip, and I don't even know where the heck that's going in. I guess I better educate myself on that. But, you know, she had the same kind of concern, that it's just, we have to figure out a better way to reach out to people and let them know. And I guess, President Hirsch, I'll be happy to try and work with you on that and other councilpersons for the time I remain on the council. Thanks. That's it.
Sure. And I guess the short answer on that is, when we deviate from the policy, we really only call out the items that are deviated. We don't necessarily highlight the items that we're doing as part of the policy on this particular project or any other project for that matter. So maybe that's the opportunity there. You know, we tend to focus on what we're not going to do according to policy instead of what the policy is. And, you know, we do, you know, as you can see in the resolution here, you know, when you get down to, you know, item number five, you know, we publish things in the hub. We, you know, try to get people on social media, and this particular neighborhood, I literally went door to door when we made the Grant Street changes so people could, you know, come to the hearings. So we had pretty good turnoffs at the hearings of late as well, so I'm encouraged by that. And this virtual reality kind of throws a monkey wrench into things, so we're going to have to really work harder in this area. So, you know, I hear you. You know, that's definitely an area of, you know, we can look at.
So Mayor?
Yes.
For the purpose of discussion on this proposal, I don't know if we have a, has this proposal been seconded and introduced yet?
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second, but we do have a need to amend it.
I presented a motion to amend at least portion of it, which is to remove all construction on the sidewalk we've discussed on McKinley Street. So that is my motion.
Well, so this is kind of where we have to figure this out, because really what we're doing here, we've already approved the work. We've already bid it out and we're under contract. We're at a point now...
That's not my understanding. No, I think it's, I think that's, it doesn't matter. We had said, we had said we did not want sidewalks on, in that McKinley Street area or any other part of our neighborhood, with the exception of Grant Street. And somehow it got into the construction plan, and I'm moving to remove that portion of this from the proposal.
Well, I have to call a point of order, because the resolution is only for the special assessment. It's not for the construction. It's really a question of if we're going to make the residents that are affected by these things, you know, pay for the portion that, under our ordinance, they're required to.
Okay, well, then my motion is to remove the requirement that this particular property owner pay any assessment charges for what is being proposed on McKinley Street.
For, you're talking about the sidewalks or any, or what are you talking about?
The sidewalks and any construction related to that sidewalk, yes. You know, basically what's happening is that we're talking about curb and gutter, sidewalk replacement, carriage walk, concrete apron cost. We're talking about a lot of costs, which pushes this up to almost $5,000. And I totally object to it. I don't think that, given what has happened, that the property owner should have to pay for that. If it's the city, I don't like the city plan order either, but I object totally to having an assessment of these neighbors who knew, did not know that this is going to happen, and to our neighborhood that did not know that this is going to happen.
So your motion is to amend the resolution to remove the property owner, I believe it's 202...
Prospect.
East Prospect?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second by Alder Person Legaki, was it?
Yes.
Okay. We've heard from Alder Borisma and Alder Riley. Did you have anything you want to add, Alder Legaki?
Um, nothing new. I think my thoughts haven't changed over time. I think that our process, I have some learn about the process, but the fact that so many have missed and that the will of the people at the public hearing wasn't heard still remains very troublesome to me. But I have since moved on, as we've done these votes, and I'm hoping that we find some proactive ways to do this better.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Sure. Any other Alders?
So I want to just get a clear picture of what communications have gone out there already. I think we've gotten the communication out to the people who are directly affected by the assessments, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's neighbors of the people who are directly affected, who might not have gotten that message, correct?
Direct mailing is correct.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Ken, I might, I have a comment on that, if I might. Mayor, this is Riley.
Keep it brief, so Ben has other questions and comments.
It'll be very brief. I'm sorry, Ben, I didn't mean to interrupt. I spoke with these people. Their name is Holloway. I spoke with them this weekend, and I don't know how they missed it, but they said to me that this came as a big surprise. But now, maybe I am misinterpreting that, that it came as a big surprise when they got notice of it, right? I don't know. But they had indicated that the fact that this project was going to occur came as a big surprise. I know Sid first became aware of it this weekend. He made me aware of it. So again, there's the transparency thing, but that's all. I just wanted to make that comment. I'm done, Ben, sorry.
I don't think I really have much more to add. I think it's trying to rehash the sidewalks in specific is picking a scab at this point, but we should get the communications correct. And I think all of us thinking creatively about how to do that is important.
I guess, you know, I feel for this landowner, but we have had many meetings on this. And I guess I just don't feel comfortable with waiving one landowner's assessment compared to all the other landowners that are listed on this resolution. Equitably, I just, I don't feel comfortable just picking one landowner, say you get a free sidewalk, and everybody else you have to pay for it. I just, if you wanted to do something across the board that everybody gets a discount, that's one thing, but to just give a freebie to one landowner, I'm not okay with. And when we had that assessment a couple of years ago, we capped it for anybody that had a retention wall, I guess, over, can't remember if it was $5,000 or whatever it was. And that affected not just one landowner, it was two or three people involved that year.
Mayor? Mayor, this is Borisma. I want to respond to Regina. You know, the issue is not the assessment primarily. The issue is whether or not there should be a sidewalk in that crazy place on what is either McKinley or Prospect. That's really the issue. That's the issue for the residents of this neighborhood. We had a clear, a clear number of people, great number of people from our neighborhood who came in and said, "We don't want any sidewalks in this neighborhood." It affects the, it affects the neighbors. It affects the whole nature of the neighborhood. That's, you know, in the point of order, the only thing that I have possible for me, it sounds like, other than a reconsideration, and I can't do a reconsideration, it sounds like. I tried that last time on Grant Street. The issue is not the assessment. The issue is the actual sidewalk. The only thing that I'm able to do tonight is to modify the assessment to these property owners. That's all, it sounds like I'm limited to do at this point. I wish I could do much more. But the issue is not the fairness of putting in a sidewalk and charging people. The issue is whether there should be a sidewalk in that spot in the first place. And I think that when you're talking about that, Regina, you're kind of muddying the waters, because I think the issue is, the issue is the sidewalk and not the assessment. I think everybody should pay their fair share. I agree with that. The issue is, there should be a sidewalk in the first place. And I think that it's not fair to tell the people for the assessment that that's muddying the water.
Respectfully, Alder Person Borisma, but the resolution at hand is regarding the assessment. It was already voted on with respect to the sidewalk, I think, in February. So unfortunately, that resolution failed back in February in favor of what you're talking about. So right now, we're just voting on whether or not the assessment is what we're doing. And so I understand where you're coming from, but that's not really what we're working on tonight. That was all already decided on in February.
But it was unclear to everybody. That's the point. The point is that people are surprised by this. The property owner is surprised by this. Alder Riley's surprised by this. I'm surprised by this. It was in a, it's in a diagram that is unclear to me, and that's the issue. It's unclear, when we talked about it, we had talked about it at length, about the fact that our neighborhood was going to be affected by the sidewalk on Grant Street and no other place. And now we see something that comes up in a document that includes that, and I wasn't aware of it. Riley wasn't aware of it. We missed it. And I'm trying to resolve the issue, and I can't resolve it by a motion to remove that sidewalk, but I can try to resolve this issue by saying the property owner should not have to pay this exorbitant fee for a sidewalk that absolutely makes no sense in our neighborhood.
Mayor, anybody else have any comments on the amendment?
Just a quick comment, if I could please, since I serve on Public Works. Am I okay? Can you hear me? All right. So with all due respect to Sid, you and I both serve on Public Works, and I have seen these diagrams for these sidewalks for many, 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 many months. None of this has been a surprise to me. And there was many opportunities for you to ask questions during Public Works and comment. And so I'm a little weary that in the 11th hour, we're having this discussion, because as a member of Public Works, this is not news to any of us.
Well, it certainly was missed. It was missed by, it was missed by both myself and certainly a number of people in the neighborhood.
All right. Any other comments on the amendment? So the amendment basically is to remove the special assessment for the property owner at 202 East Prospect Street. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
So I would say the noes have it, so it takes it back to the original...
We have, Mayor, can I request a roll call on it, please?
Certainly.
If that's appropriate. Thank you.
Yes, you can always request a roll call. So as soon as Holly's ready, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Borisma?
Hi.
Caravello?
Aye.
Aye.
Haley?
No.
Hirsch?
No.
Hunt? Alder Person Hunt?
Aye.
What was that?
An aye.
People know what they're voting on?
Yes, we are due to die on the amendment.
Jensen?
No.
Legaki?
Aye.
Mieske?
No.
Reeves?
No.
Riley?
Aye.
Schumacher?
No.
Six, six.
That motion is, let's see, one, two, three. That is a tie of six to six.
So that motion fails. So it takes us back to the original motion. In the original motion, we still need to amend it for the two items that Director Shiel pointed out. Would somebody be willing to make the motion to amend those two items?
I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Haley. Any discussion on those two items?
Just for clarification, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I could just point out what it is. It's to remove Harrison Court from this assessment schedule and Robey Road from Johnson Street to Van Buren Street.
All right. Here are no questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Two opposed. That motion carries. Item number eight is R86 of 2020. This one came out of Stoughton Utilities. I believe Alder Person Jensen, are you the liaison for Stoughton Utilities?
Your Honor, Judge, Mayor, the last vote, I apologize. I thought that vote was only with... Um, the last vote, I apologize. I thought that vote was only with respect to Robbie's amendment. Was that the vote to pass the assessment?
Oh yeah, you're right. Yep, you're right.
Thank you.
So that takes us.
Yeah.
We have to go back to the original motion as amended. So any questions on the original motion as amended? Nice catch.
Thank you.
Alright, no questions. So all in favor of the original motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
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 Three noes, I hear. Okay, that motion does pass. Um, so next was the uh utilities audit. And I think uh, older person Jensen, do you want to introduce that from Stoughton Utilities?
Uh, I will do that. Yes, thank you, your honor. Uh, it's Resolution eighty-six twenty twenty. Authorizing and directing the proper city of uh officials to acknowledge the receipt of the Stoughton Utilities twenty nineteen. Says eighteen, I believe that should be nineteen, audit report and management letter. And I would so move.
Okay, I can.
Second by President Hirsch. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, please note that correction says twenty eighteen should be twenty nineteen.
I will fix that.
And it was approved seven oh by the Utilities Committee.
Alright, it looks like Jamin has it teed up here. Um, you want to introduce our guest?
Sure, we have uh Jody Dobson. She's a partner with uh Baker Tilly. She's the partner of the Utilities Engagement on the. The Energy and Utilities Team of Baker Tilly and she will go through the presentation and the required communications.
Are you able to hear me now?
We're getting a lot of feedback, Jody. I don't know if you it you may have to maybe mute or log off on here. Your items.
Okay. Okay.
Um, that's better.
So I guess if we move to the next screen here. What I want to first start with is the highlights for each of the utilities. And we start with the electric utility. Um, we have the rate of return. For both the current year and the prior year. And we do see that the rate of return has dropped a little bit during the current year. But it's still positive. And if we look at the graph below, we can see that the revenues are outpacing the expenses. Um, if we move down below that just a little bit. We have the months of unrestricted cash on hand. Where the goal here is to have a minimum three months of operations on hand. And we can see the electric department is consistently close to that five month mark over the last several years. The next benchmark that we look at is debt coverage. And we see that the utility is well above the required minimum debt coverage for two thousand and nineteen being at. Two point seven versus one point three. And the last benchmark we've got here is looking at the amount of infrastructure financed through debt versus equity. And the twenty-five percent through debt is a very reasonable and common range to be in. So overall, the electric utility has relatively stable operations with good reserves and a reasonable debt position. The next page looks at the similar benchmarks for the water utility. And we can see the rate of return has improved a little from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. And in the graph below that the revenues um continue to outpace expenses and that margin increased a little bit there. The water utility has been able to build its cash reserves during the last year. So it's closed a little over six months worth of cash on hand. And has um debt coverage again well above the one point three minimum requirement. And the water utility has about twenty percent of its infrastructure financed through debt at year end. So again, overall, a a stable and positive position. And finally, looking at the sewer operations, we don't look at a rate of return because it's not a regulated operation. But we can see that the revenues, um, the balance over the expenses is relatively consistent over the last five years. The sewer utility has drawn down its cash reserves a little bit in the last year for some projects. But still well above that three month minimum. And the debt coverage is two times versus the one point one times requirement. These are actually backwards on the slide. I did double check that. So. And then the investment in capital assets, about twenty-one percent debt. So really, a very consistent picture for across all three utilities. The other document that I wanted to touch on is our reporting insights and I won't walk through all of this document. But this is a bit of a new format for us this year and yet it includes a lot of similar information. So one, the first item I wanted to touch on. Is on page five. This is really where we talk about the objectives of the audit. And then the next page also talks about management's responsibilities. The key here is that all of the information in the financial statements comes from your team and your records. Our responsibility is to understand your processes in order to design our tests. So that we can issue our audit opinion. And your financial statements receive what we call a clean or an unmodified audit opinion. So that's the highest level of assurance that we can give. If we move ahead then, starting on page ten, we talk a little bit more about that audit approach. Touching on some of the areas that we focus on in the audit. And on page eleven, we discuss internal controls. And I'm very happy to report that we did not identify any material weaknesses during the audit this year. That's a very significant positive item. Reflects very positively on you and your management team. The next section touches on required communications. Um, a lot of this is a no news is good news section, so I won't go through these in too much detail. And then beyond that, we do provide some information about upcoming accounting standards and other issues that are of interest to. Organizations right now related to cybersecurity, um succession planning, etc. You've also got a copy of the management representation letter. And on page thirty-three, there's information on um one set of what we refer to as a. Uncorrected or waived fine adjustment. This is just um an item that management chose not to record and it did not have a material impact on the statement, so we disclose it to you. Um, consistent with prior year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from any elders?
It all looks good. Thank you.
Okay, um, older person Jensen, did you make a motion on this one?
I did.
Or it was?
I don't recall. I don't recall hearing a second, but I did make the motion.
I thought I seconded it.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Um, and the motion really is to acknowledge the receipt of the audit.
Yes, correct. Yes, I stand corrected on that. Yes.
Okay, are there any uh questions or comments on? The motion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you very much. And we're gonna go to item fourteen, which is another audit. We figured you're having so much fun, we'll do another one. And uh, we have somebody on the line for that one as well, I believe.
Yes, good evening. Sorry, Jamin, go ahead.
After you, I was just gonna introduce you, introduce you. This is Carla Gorgon. She's the the municipal uh partner in charge of.
Well, we're gonna we're gonna continue the good news tonight. I will though say a little commercial break that the skies are looking really dark to the south of where I'm sitting in my house right now, so. Um, hopefully we'll get through this without uh losing losing electricity. But uh, again, thanks for your time tonight and allowing us the opportunity to present the results virtually. I'm going to focus on the governmental funds and specifically the general funds. So Jody covered the utilities. The utilities. Operations are primarily financed through user charges. Uh, the governmental activities, specifically the general fund, their activities are financed principally through tax revenue. And intergovernmental revenues. And so we focus on the general fund because it is the main operating fund of the city. And fund balance is the uh metric that we look at. Fund balance is your equity at the end of the year. And so you can see that total fund balance increased about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. And I will talk about the reasons behind that in just a moment. When you break down fund balance, you break it down into several different categories. Uh, the first that we're showing here is unassigned fund balance. And your unassigned fund balance went up by about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And unassigned fund balance are funds that do not have strings attached or you you haven't um specified these monies for any particular purpose. The assigned fund balance remains relatively consistent from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. And that's primarily made up of the payment and lieu of tax uh from the utilities. It's uh revenue that is recorded or uh. Twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, but uh revenue that you will in your twenty twenty budget. And then lastly, you have non-spendable fund balance, the last category, and that also went up by about three hundred and thousand dollars. Non-spendable fund balance assets that the city has and it intends to collect on them, but they're not readily liquid. And this is primarily made up of loans that the general fund has made to three TIF districts, TIF five, six, and eight. If we move down the page to the summarized income statement in the middle column, it says final budget. You can see that you essentially budgeted to break even for the year. But you'll see by the variance column that you actually had a positive variance of about five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in the general fund. And that's primarily related to revenues and other financing sources coming in over budget. Your expenditures were spot on. And the two biggest drivers on the revenue side was the first being investment income or interest income. That was over budgeted by about a hundred and forty-one thousand. And then TIF number three, TIF number three owed the general fund some monies that it had borrowed uh years ago. And TIF number three had adequate revenues in order to pay that debt off or that obligation off in full over to the general fund. About a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So we're gonna. Which is uh, looks at your fund balance in the general fund in accordance with your policy. And so I do commend you because you do have policies that allow you to uh manage your operations. And you have a policy that says that your unassigned general fund balance should be within a range of twenty to twenty-five percent. Of the general fund annual budgeted expenditures. The caveat to that, and it is spelled out, um, I had two lines below that. Is uh, if if you were to do the math and if you were to look at the unassigned fund balance from the previous page. You'll see that this amount on this page is lower and that is because that amount is reduced by the deficit for the opera house, which is about two hundred. And it's also reduced by a deficit development authority, sixty-seven thousand dollars. So even when you take those two amounts deficits offset that with your unassigned fund balance in the general fund. You are, you do exceed your policy, so you're at about twenty-eight percent. And your goal is to be within that twenty to twenty-five percent. So if you're gonna be outside the range, it's certainly positive um to be outside in a positive direction. Down below is a graphic where we take a look at your unrestricted general fund fund balance. So this is taking a look at it in a different way. Uh, where we take a look at the unassigned fund balance again, where there's no commitments to those monies. Plus anything in assigned because in assignment, you can make a different decision going forward. And we compare that to the general fund expenditures and you're at about fifty-six percent, so a very healthy fund balance position in the general fund. Before we switch gears to the debt service position or the debt position of the city, are there any questions on a general fund? Or the positive results in the uh in the general fund? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next page. Um, so when we talk about financing activities, you know, in the governmental funds, they are financed primarily through tax lobby. Through shared revenues and other state aid and then you finance projects, capital projects, many of them through borrowings. And so you again for uh borrowings, you have a debt management policy. And two things I just want to point out. One is general obligation debt, which is what we're looking at here, is secured by the taxing authority of the city. And that's one of the reasons why you're able to borrow at such favorable interest rates is because of that security that the city provides. Uh, with respect to the debt issued. And state statute limits all governmental entities to borrow up to five percent of its equalized value. So the top line in the graph below, that's your limit. That's your five percent of equalized value. The city's policy is to not exceed four percent of your equalized value and at the end of the year, you are just over three percent. So you're well within the policy that you've established for yourself. Um, if you look below then at the graph, you'll see that the green line or the bottom line, that's the amount of geo debt that you have outstanding in comparison. To the debt capacity and the debt capacity, that's a lot of that is outside of your control. That's gonna be driven much by the economy and any. Growth or contraction that would happen in the economy. And then the line below is your debt outstanding. And so Jamin, if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see that the debt outstanding by type. Uh, the city has of the thirty-eight million outstanding, uh thirty-six million is related to the city, just over nine million of that is related to. TIF projects, so it is anticipated that the TIF increment collected will pay those projects off and then a small amount related to the utility. And then our last metric tonight, if we move to the next page, this is taking a look at of your annual spend in all your governmental funds, so. This is taking a look at all your TIF funds, your special revenue funds, general fund, and you compare. The debt service that you that you incur principal and interest and compare that to non-capital expenditures, you're at about twenty-five percent. Again, we like to look at metrics as um over a five-year period. Uh, we don't include capital because capital can fluctuate greatly. And this is just taking a look at, uh, for those of you who've been on the council in the past, I I typically describe this as. And this is just taking a look at, for those of you who've been on the council in the past, I typically describe this as if you're looking at a mortgage payment or a rent payment, you know, how much of that is in relation to your, your monthly spend? Well, this is looking at it in relation to your annual spend. So there's really no right or wrong answer here. It's just a, a metric that takes a look at what you're spending on debt service. What is important, and I know Damon does, or Jamin does monitor this, is what the debt service means to your mill rate. You know, what does that do to your tax levy? And then if you move down on the page, it just shows you the principal and interest that you did pay for the last two years compared to the non-capital expenditures. Any questions on the debt service metrics? Before, I'll just mention a few things in the reporting highlights. So the reporting highlights document, Jody did a nice job explaining the various components of this. We do issue two separate letters, one that's geared more to the city and one geared to the utilities, but much of the content is consistent. I think the two things I just, I wanna point out to you is, one, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. That's the highest level of assurance that you can receive on your financial statements. It's what you received in the past, it's what you should expect to receive. And then we did not note any material weaknesses on the city's portion of the audit as well. So again, during the audit, we have a responsibility to gain an understanding of a control environment. We do walkthroughs of key transaction cycles. And we did not notice anything that would raise to the level of a material weakness. And that includes any adjustments that we did note to the financial records. None of those were significant or material as well. So very commendable. The city was very prepared for the audit, and so we certainly appreciate that. And I don't have any further remarks regarding this particular document unless there are questions. Okay.
All right, here are no questions. Um, thank you very much. And I'm
Thank you.
A motion, this one came through finance earlier tonight, Alder President Schumacher.
So I'll make a motion to accept the audit report prepared from Baker Tilly.
Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. All right, thank you. You have a good night.
Thank you.
And the next item is, uh, I wanna skip down a couple, I wanna go to item eleven. Patrick, hopefully he's ready. Patrick has been working on Eagle Scout project. And he has a quick presentation he wants to do. This came through the finance committee. So I guess I'd look for a motion if you wanna start out, Alder President Schumacher.
I'm gonna defer this one off to Alder Reeves as I'll abstain from this vote because I have affiliation with troop one sixty seven.
All right.
All right.
Uh, resolution eighty seven dash twenty twenty authorizing Patrick. I believe it's Wosniak to construct raised garden beds at Lowell Park and the city to contribute nine hundred and sixty five dollars toward the project. And I saw more.
Second.
Second by Caravallo, I believe I heard first. All right, Patrick, are you with us? Are you unmuted?
Yeah.
Awesome, I have you, uh, your PowerPoint on the screen, just tell me when you want me to advance.
You can go down to the next.
Okay. There it is. The floor is yours.
Um, I'm planning on building four garden beds. And the two of them will be twenty two inches hall, tall with a bench on it. And the two of them will be closer or at ADA standards or they're, yeah, they're at ADA standards for people in wheelchairs so that they can like go up to it without having to bend over. And I plan to install them on June thirteenth that I updated that. And through fundraising, I've raised nine sixty five from friends and family. And I'm asking the city to match that. And any excess funds will be returned fifty fifty to donors and the city. And all the labor will be provided from my troop. You can go to the next. This is the proposed location. I have it, the orange boxes on the graphic are where I plan to, and then there's a picture that I took and drew in, four boxes. These are the, this is the plan for the shorter box that's twenty two inches tall. And then this is the plan for the box that is twenty eight inches tall. Then this, um, so the two, like, the garden, like, the garden plots that are there already are, I think fifteen feet by twenty feet. So I made the boxes to fit inside that area, but off the end of the existing plots. So this just shows how far apart each box will be and how far from the edge of the existing plots they'll be. This is my quote for two boxes from Stone Lumber, for how much the lumber will cost. And this is a layout of how much the total materials budget will be. For, and this is budget, other stuff such as food for me to provide to workers, garbage bags, and water. And this is the total layout of how much the whole thing will cost and how as a breakdown of funds.
All right, anything else you wanna add, Patrick? Otherwise, council members may have a few questions for you.
No, that's all I know.
All right, are there any questions for Patrick?
I would just like to commend Patrick. I think this is great. We've been talking about having ADA raised accessible gardens and raised gardens in that area for a number of years, so this is fantastic. And I look forward to seeing them when they're done.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Patrick, is this your last requirement that you need for Eagle merit?
No, I still have a couple requirements for my Cookie merit badge.
Okay.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
All right, here are no questions. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing your completed project.
Tim, I still abstain from that vote.
Okay. All right. Next item is item number nine, or number eight, no, number nine. The next two are first readings from Stone Utilities. And Alder Person Jensen, do you wanna introduce these?
I'd be glad to. This is ordinance eight of twenty twenty. Dot to adopt modification to subsection seventy four dash one twelve and seventy four dash one thirteen of the city of Stoughton Municipal Code of Ordinances. And it was a recommendation to the council, seven oh from utilities, and it's the first reading.
Okay, anything else you wanna say about that? I think Jill is on the line as well.
Yeah, yes, Jill could probably speak to it better than I could.
Thank you, and probably Jamin almost better than me, because this is definitely Jamin's hard work that's been put into this. In the budget, there was actually six percent that we were looking for, knowing that we would need rate case this year. Jamin went through all the numbers, and Jamin, if you want to add to this, I know you know all this much better than I do. But in the end, we're at four point seven four percent, which is about a dollar fifty five per month impact to our customers. This is the first time we've been doing a rate case since two thousand and fifteen for the sewer utility. Jamin, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Well, no, you pretty much hit it on the head. You mentioned that we had, we had originally forecasted a six percent increase. That was actually planned to be effective for January first, but once we ran through the final financial results for twenty nineteen, we A bought a little time and B, we're, we're able to reduce that down to about four point seven eight. Again, the, the impact we generally look at is, is on the residential user. So we're looking at about a dollar fifty, a dollar fifty five per month on an average user.
Any questions or comments from Alders on this one?
Just, just to comment again, like I said, first reading, and it'll be back for a second reading on the ninth.
Okay, very good. And then the next one is ordinance ten, or ordinance, ordinance nine of twenty twenty. Alder Person Jensen, this is also a first reading.
Thank you, your honor. It's ordinance nine, twenty twenty, to create section seventy four dash seventeen of the city of Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the replacement of lead water lines. It was a first reading, and it was a seven zero recommendation from utilities.
All right. Anything you wanna add to this one, Jill? I know you have a presentation you wanna run through it, or?
Uh, if that would be, yeah, I think that'd be helpful if, if we do have time tonight.
Okay, I have it queued up here, just let me know when to advance it.
Excellent, thank you. Um, just wanted to take the time, I know we actually had our exceedance and led back in August of last year. And we went through a variety of different things, and I wanna give the background really ultimately of why we're proceeding at this point in time with an ordinance. And as you go through the next slide here, the big issue is ultimately health effects. Particularly in children, one to five, or really zero to five, also expectant mothers, but it really impacts a variety of different things. Heart, brain development, reproductive organs, kidneys, bones, but it's substantial the impact that they can have. And these are lifelong impacts. Besides brain development, a lot of times on the heart side, over the age of fifty, there's some additional issues that tend to arise for people. So it's a significant health impact and actually threat for the community. Next slide. The one neat thing that this slide I think really highlights is the reduction, you know, basically the regulations that ultimately have looked at reducing lead exposure within our environment. So I think the biggest one that really is noteworthy here was when we went to lead-free gas. There's a variety of different things, there's steps that have been taken from a regulation standpoint to they reduce the exposure potential for lead. You can see that, you know, as that graph shows dramatic impacts on the level of lead in, in the blood. Next slide. When we look at our system, the lead doesn't start, actually our raw water is very high quality. We do very little treatment of that raw water. That is lead-free. We put it through our distribution system, and at that point, it's still lead-free. When it actually gets though to the customer, depending on the type of pipe that goes from the water main that typically lives in the street to that customer into their home, is where it has the potential, most likely potential, any way of picking up lead. And that's really if that pipe is made of lead. So as it goes through our whole system, it's really lead-free until it gets to that customer. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. But there's kind of a complication piece to this, is that that lead service is partially owned by the utility and partially owned by that private property owner. So the water main, as you see there, owned by the utility, that part of the service is owned too, including the shut-off, which is a curbside, is all owned by the utility. And from that point, it's actually the customer's responsibility and their ownership. The kind of little graphic on the left there really highlights some of the different places within the home that the water can come into contact with lead, but ultimately it's really that lead service which is the most significant potential source. Next slide. And this is just a graphic again, showing what we know today as far as how many homes within the community have lead services. We've got four thousand eight hundred and forty-three services through the community. About nine percent, nine point seven percent of those are public side, so utility side is lead. And almost sixteen percent is that private side. Point there is that when we actually do a street construction project, we do like to find those areas where there's a lot of lead services. We replace our side, we provide information to the customer side to encourage them to replace theirs. But they typically replace it in a much reduced amount than we do. Last year, I think we replaced eighty lead services. Five ultimately on the customer side were replaced. Excellent, okay. So what's our present situation? I think that from when we talked, really, we, I had a presentation that talked a lot about the things that we were facing at that point in time, about a year ago or so, a little bit last about ten months. And at that point in time, we believed that we could sample ourselves back into compliance, which would mean in the end, we do more sampling, lead and copper rule. And we get enough samples back, and we get ourselves back in a state of compliance. A lot of exceedance is really not a violation, but it says there's a multiple things that need to be done, more education to the community, a variety of different things there. Since that time, though, the EPA has come down and said, you know, the fifteen parts per billion, which is that threshold that we now need to meet, it's not going, going to be. It's not enacted yet, but it's gonna be ten parts per billion. And that's significant to us based on our, our samples. Going forward, all of our sample sites also, which are approved by DNR, must have lead services. We actually have currently, or in the past, when we were sampling, some of those sample sites were, were copper services that we were sampling. Future state too, as we move forward with that EPA role that I made mention of, from going to fifteen to ten, they're also mandating that when we replace, there's no way we can replace the utility side without the customer side being replaced. So without an ordinance or some way to actually mandate that occurs, when we would do these street projects, we basically need to leave the lead in the ground because we would have no ability to then have that private side replaced. Here. Um, so moving forward, all the sample sites would have to be lead. The other thing as we're looking at, we had to take a look at, and basically do a study of our water quality and see if there's anything related to our water quality that may make those lead pipes to that lead more, you know, ability to actually migrate into the water. In the first phase of that, the next phase of that requirement ultimately from DNR will be actually looking at a control zone control where we'll have to do a pilot study, taking a look at our water and chemical addition to the water to see if we can kind of sequester that lead into those pipes. That first study that I talked about with the pilot study that we would need to be doing is about an eighty thousand dollar study. From there, once we determine the amount of chemical that we would need, which is usually an ortho or polyphosphate blend, it would be about fifty five thousand dollars annually to actually then add that chemical to try to sequester that lead. The, the other kind of downside of that is that we also are mandated by DNR on the waste or treatment plant of our phosphorus levels. So those are all poly or orthophosphates that we're injecting in the water, which then at the waste or treatment plant, we would need to even work harder to get back out at an additional cost. Also, as we move forward and look to the future, once we cannot sample back into compliance, we actually will be mandated to replace seven percent. So basically going forward, annually, we're required to replace seven percent of our services. But then again, by the EPA, we would have to make sure that both the private and public side are, are replaced. So next slide. So this is a graphic basically of, of kind of highlighting the top, but there's thirty samples, or in some cases, there was more than thirty samples. And as you look through these numbers, the bolded number basically is what we got, the ninetieth percentile, where that's what we're reporting out on the samples that we took for our lead and copper rule. As you look at those bolded numbers, two things to keep in mind. One, some of those samples that we had done, thirty or more, depending on the year and what the condition was, some of those were copper. So they would tend to have very low lead readings. Now, from going forward, they no longer can be any copper, they must all be lead. And you also look at those bolded numbers, and only two of those And you also look at those bolded numbers and only two of those, of those, that time period would actually be under 10. You pretty much know they, you know, take out now these copper ones. There's just looking forward, there's no way we'll ever meet that 10 parts per billion. Unfortunately, it's just the situation where we will have to do something moving forward because we'll never be able to sample ourselves back into compliance. And we're talking with the DNR and we've done a lot of that. They ultimately said that initially they thought that we would not be mandated. They couldn't force us to actually treat the water. They've come back now and said, yes, absolutely. If we cannot meet that 10 parts per billion, we will be forced to treat the water. Because in the end of the day, lead is a health threat and then so we've got to be able to address that. Excellent. So what I wanted to do, this ordinance ultimately is a part of how we take a look at how do we eliminate this issue. For me, I don't think that long-term, the big, you know, come from a big picture standpoint of how do we address this issue is we need to remove the lead. We may be in a position of having to treat the water. Well, we also want to look at that, I think, as a short-term solution with the long-term goal, potentially short-term goal, but of eliminating lead across the board. So we've been doing ongoing educational things. The draft ordinance actually in front of you right now is a part of that. That ordinance was actually based on Madison and Manitowoc's and Oregon's ordinance. We did work with the city attorney to actually put that ordinance together. There's a replacement program that basically the ordinance allows for. So it basically makes sure that both sides, public and private, are replaced. We do have an opportunity, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about this, of possibly a grant. In 2021, the DNR is opening up funds potentially for grant funding on the private side. And we're also right now working on putting together an RFP, which is a request for qualifications to do a pre-qualification list of plumbers for any of those property owners this year that are replacing that lead service. They work through with those pre-qualified plumbers and they have the ability or could be eligible for being reimbursed for the monies that they spend this year, assuming we get grant funding next year. So next slide. So currently, DNR is coming out with this new grant. They have said that it could be a two or three-year grant, but there's really no guarantee of that. It could be one year. They've figured it's going to be about $60 million and it's 100% first come, first served. Basically, we've had to be eligible through the PSC reports as we've been reporting out that we have lead services. In the past, there's been grant opportunities, but in those situations, the low to moderate income level has not made us eligible. This one has none of those requirements. Basically, as long as we have, which we have through our PSC reporting, we have shared that we have lead services, we are eligible. So basically, we apply. It's an opportunity then with also the ordinance is because this would help fund or this would fund the private side with the ordinance in place, then it would allow for 100% elimination on the services. Without a grant, we looked at a 15-year plan. We look at 7% annually is what we're going to be mandated by the DNR to replace for lead services. It's about 15 years. And we actually added a piece to highlight with this is we kind of walked through, if we've got this grant opportunity before us, we're looking at 736 or so services that would be replaced through that opportunity. Looking at it from the perspective of it's a one, you know, it could be a one-year opportunity, first come, first served. So how could we actually replace 100% of those services? So we have been talking with contractors and determining exactly what a bid package will look like specs to put that together so that we could actually achieve that over one year. Excellent. So the big, I guess a number of takeaways is ultimately that the lead issue is a public nuisance, a public health threat. The process of the ordinance allows actually for us to provide an order, abatement order, to each of the property owners. They get a 30 days to be able to respond to that if they do not agree. Ultimately with that, then they apply to the circuit court. And then that really goes through a court process. That ultimately, the Dean County Circuit Court would determine whether or not it's truly a public nuisance or not. The grant allows then for 100% of the public, excuse me, 100% of the private side to be funded, especially on how we're looking at doing it, because we would be bidding in 2021. This is not true for 2020, but in 2021, we would be bidding all of the work. So both the public side and the private side. And with that bidding process, then assuming we're grant successful and we receive those dollars, 100% of that private side would be paid for by the grant. If we don't get the grant, there is a special assessment process. And basically, it's set up for at five years, it would be 0% interest. At 10 years, it would be prime and at 20 years, it would be one over prime. Next slide. I think this is kind of telling, you know, as we talked through this and we initially thought, okay, well, we'll sample ourselves back in compliance and then recognize that's really not going to be possible. We started to look at, you know, what opportunities are out there. And as DNR, you know, walked through and explained to us that we would be mandated ultimately to treat our water. If we couldn't come up with another solution, they brought forward, you know, we've got this grant opportunity. And we've been working really hard, very closely with them over the last, well, for sure, six months. A little bit more, but really hard on this grant opportunity for about six months. This is just a statement from, we were working very closely with the chief of the water engineering section of DNR. And to me, this just says a very solid, you know what? You guys are doing all the right things to put this together and they're going to help us through and try to, you know, make it, see that we can be successful. There's no way to know going forward that we could actually, you know, receive this grant. But I think this is a pretty solid nod from DNR that we are, you know, at least positioning ourselves in a way in which we could be eligible. So going forward from here, we'll continue obviously our education piece, looking for the ordinance to actually be first read today, on second reading, June 9th, and ultimately approval. We'll continue to move forward with the grant opportunities. And public education, we've actually already started doing social media, public education on exactly, you know, what we're looking at with this ordinance, linked to the proposed ordinance, but also trying to, you know, get people engaged and understand exactly what the public health threat is. The safe drinking water funds, which is actually where these monies come from, that opens up June 30th. That's one concern I sort of have with the timing of this ordinance is originally DNR had stated that the grant opportunity would be coming forward in October. They've now moved that to September. So I want us to be positioned, because it's first come, first served, to be set up to be able to, as soon as they open that grant up, that we can apply immediately. So we want to make sure that that's in place. And then in fall, basically fall of 2020, once we know we've received that grant through spring of 21, we would be gearing up basically to bid out this project and get everything in alignment ultimately to be successful of replacing 100% of those lead services. Another neat piece to this is with doing the project, the way we're laying it out and obviously a number of things have to align to make that happen. But the other piece on the private, on the public side is we've worked with DNR and also through the safe drinking water loan program, there is a loan process. Unfortunately, there's a principal forgiveness section of that. And as we walked through that and looked at that as 2021, we weren't eligible for any principal forgiveness. But in 2022, they actually are redoing those rules as far as what they consider to be a principal forgiveness. And we would actually, if we had to do again a number of things, we could be eligible for 30% reduction on our loan. So we can actually do the project in 2021, worked out with Jamin that there is the opportunity for some interim financing and ultimately then would seek out that loan in 2022 to cover the utilities portion. And with that, the opportunity for 30% principal forgiveness. So that's what I've got. I just wanted to share all that information. I know it's a lot, but there's a number of things that have happened since we really, you know, kind of walked through where we're at on the lead side.
If I could ask you, Jill, do you feel that we need to move on this tonight? If so, we could make a motion to waive the rules.
I think, I appreciate that. I think based on just that June 30th date, that would be the soonest that I would be concerned about that grant coming available. They haven't given us any kind of indication that they are going to move it to that date. So I would be okay with this just being a first reading and moving it, you know, waiting for June 9th. But I think if there's support, I guess I'm open. But from a perspective of them opening up the grants before June 9th, I don't anticipate that. But thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, when you get into the, the public presentation, education, partial portion of this plan, would you consider giving this same presentation at like a school board meeting? You know, we had the, the issue with the River Bluff campus with the lead in the water there, just so that they're also seeing and anyone that's watching their meetings would also be able to know that we're working very well on this.
I would love to. I think the more we can get the information out, because I want to encourage, you know, we know so much. And I guess what I mean by that is we do a lot of, one, I want to get the information out so that they know what we're doing. Secondly, there may be properties out there that have a lead service that we just don't know yet. We do a lot of our, when we do meter change out, we actually do cross connection inspections to identify what the material is of the service. But there's still homes within the community that we haven't actually done that cross connection inspections. I think the more information we can get out there, we can find those and make sure that we do achieve 100% eventually, one, assuming we're grant successful. So yes, I would, I mean, any of those opportunities, absolutely. I would love to give this presentation to whoever would listen.
Great.
Thank you.
I just wanted to underline that if we do get this grant, it would be far beyond the, the thoughts we had about how we were going to fix the lead issues last year when we were talking about this. And if we do get this grant, it's not by accident, it's not falling into our laps. It's because a lot of hard work has gone into this, as Jill has said, on the utility side. And I'll thank Jill and the utility for that and I'm strongly in favor of this.
Thank you.
Good, all that, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have to say the team has really been working hard to come up with a plan to try to position ourselves and also to continue to get out there and find out where those lead services are. So I really have to underscore the water division, wastewater division is assisting with that and Brian Hoops as well to get this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. It'll take us to our next item, which is R 88 of 2020. And this one came through the Plan Commission, the next two items did. And I know we had some feedback tonight and we'll run it through Alder Person Caravallo and then we can kind of explain, you know, what we're looking at tonight and kind of what the process would be for this project if it goes forward. Alder Person Caravallo, would you like to introduce us?
Sure. Yeah, if you can bring it up there, that would help me. Thank you. This is R 88 of 2020, approving a certified survey map to combine the properties at 1700 East Main Street, owned by Mark Rosenbaum, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch, Alder Person Caravallo.
So this is a certified survey map to combine the properties at the corner of 51 and N from two lots into one. Also realigning as part of this, there is a easement that splits those two lots. This would also shift or realign the easement that goes through those two lots. And I think Rodney is really going to be the man with details on this thing.
In essence, it's really preserving the easement between the two lots. But if it becomes one lot, it preserves the lot, the access point from county N over to lot two. Lot two is the building that houses Fastenal. The only access for that lot is across this access easement east to west from this point to County Trunk Highway N. The consolidation of the parcels creates one parcel of land that would accommodate potentially the QuickTrip proposal that's being considered.
But does it have anything to do with, yeah, so there is basically realigning that easement to number two, just a bit from where it currently has been existing?
Actually, it's very, it's essentially the same location. The former lot line you can see used to split. This easement was on either side of the former lot line. So it actually is being retained in its originally planned location as identified currently.
Okay. So Rodney, does that mean that that lot number two still will use that area to get out of their lot? I need a little bit clarification of what Alder Caravallo was saying and what you're saying. Does lot number two have access to N now or not?
Lot number two is the location that I'm highlighting here with the stamp on it. Lot number two does not have any direct access to 51. The only access into lot two or out of lot two is across this access easement to County Highway N. They may have some inner, inner easements that come out as a result of the development of the QuickTrip site to accommodate a movement that gets them out to Cedar Brook as well. But right now, their only prescribed easement is in and out of this access point onto County Highway and across this parcel.
Is that normal to like create a CSM knowing that it blocks another landowner's ability to get to a major road? I mean, because how is it if, what if there isn't an agreement and we agree to this? And now that landlord has no access to the road?
So this, there's an access agreement or an access easement already on this parcel of land. It just happens to be on two lots, lots three on the south side and lot four. The combination of these lots into one parcel does not remove that the access easement across the parcel.
But they're, in that next part, they're building, the next resolution, they're building would eliminate that, right?
Their site plan accommodates a route through this, through the facility, not through the building, but through the site. Like I said, they might be contemplating some other agreement that allows them to have additional access out to Cedar Brook.
So at this point, the Plan Commission has reviewed the, the CSM request and also the conditional use permit, which is the next item. And they're still looking for modifications for the site plan.
Can I ask a question there?
Pardon me?
I was just curious if I might ask a question about the project.
Sure, we do have developers on the line too, so if you need them to answer, they are available.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I appreciate that. This is Alder Person Riley. One of the questions I have is this, what, forgive me for not being aware of this, but what is there at present? What occupies these lots at present, if anything?
It's vacant.
Vacant, whatever.
All of it's vacant. How does this relate to the current QuickTrip that's on that side of the city, if at all?
This is Rodney. It's farther, this one would be farther to the east. They've reported that their plan is after this one is constructed to remove the other facility and market the property.
Okay, so they'd be removing that building though and market that property, Rodney?
Yes, that's okay.
Do you understand anyway?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That answers those questions. Thank you.
Is there anybody from the developers that would like to, to add on to that or did we cover it?
This is Troy, Troy Malzahar, real estate manager, QuickTrip. Just a point of order on Rodney's comment, the existing QuickTrip that's been there for about 30 years, we'd replace that with this facility. We'd remove the fueling operation and put the building up for sale. So we wouldn't necessarily tear down the building, but the fueling operations would be removed when the new store opened. That's all.
And if I can ask a quick question, when you refer to removing fueling operations, does that involve removal of the tanks that are underground for all the gasoline storage and all that apparatus?
Yes.
This is Jean Lagaki with a question.
I, I'm trying to understand the concept of ease of access versus access of traffic. Those are two different, two different points. And I just kind of want a little bit more explanation about this lot two's access if they're combined. It means that the ease of access remains the same, correct? We've just combined these lots. Is my understanding correct?
The route, yes, the route for traffic to get to lot two remains the same with this, this survey.
So most of the concerns brought up by people tonight about this would be covered more under the conditional use permit, right? Than this survey map?
And/or the site plan.
Right. And the site plan, would we approve that later?
The Plan Commission has approval authority on the site plan.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mayor? Tom Mattson. See, I would just like to reiterate to make sure that the council members are aware that the existing easement that's there providing access to lot two remains unchanged. It's in the same position that it has been and just want to make sure that that's clear. Nothing has changed with regards to access to lot two. Thank you.
I should actually clarify, yeah, when I mentioned that, I was looking at a note that I had here that actually was, I apologize if I created any confusion with my comment about realigning or shifting the easement. The easement will stay from N leading to lot two.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, Sid.
Yeah, I just wonder, I don't know if anybody knows, but what is the possibility that this is not an environmental clean site? Low, low QuickTrip. A superfund.
Are you suggesting the current site we're looking at is, is related to an industrial or a superfund?
Well, a number of gas, number of gas stations in the past in our city and also our I just wonder, it's been there for a long time. So I just wonder what the possibility is that it might be a superfund site.
So I understand you must be referencing their current location on the east side. I think the superfund sites are generally related to industrial waste and/or our superfund site is a former missile solid waste site. Generally, gas stations, I think, fall under a different type of cleanup other than superfund law. But they'd certainly have to adhere to cleanup requirements for that.
What about that marathon site? Was that superfund or not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the understanding is QuickTrip would take all the necessary, you know, work that needs to be done to make sure that site would be clean so they can market it. They're not going to be able to sell it if it's not clean. So, you know, it'd be their responsibility to do that. On this particular site, you know, they, they need both lots in order to build the type of store that they believe will be able to serve this area. I know we heard some concerns from the neighbors. And I think a lot of those concerns are more with, with road and access and traffic. And I believe that there's been conversation with Dane County on some of them issues. I'm not really sure if they're resolved or what exactly the process would be to address some of them. You know, let's face it, something's going to be developed there someday, either on both lots or one or two lots. And, you know, there's an opportunity in front of us now to be able to serve the east side of town better. It's certainly short of a, you know, a grocery store, but the newer QuickTrip certainly have a lot of more, more products than the current store would have to offer the east side of town. So, you know, anytime, you know, you have a change like this, there's pros and cons. And what we're trying to do is put together a plan at the Planning Commission that will address as many of the issues that we can, you know, to make this a positive experience for the neighborhood and all the customers that want to come in and out of the QuickTrip. So the first step, really, the first step, I think for them is to acquire the land and, you know, oftentimes these offers are contingent on certain things. And the CSM would have to be something that would be executed in order for them to potentially build on the site. So that's really the first step.
Mayor?
Sure.
Riley, thank you. I think we're, we're considering the conditional use permit. Why do we need a conditional use permit in this instance? I thought I saw a note perhaps from Director Shield that advised this has always been zone commercial. So I'm just curious why there is a CUP required.
It is zone commercial. It does, it's planned business. It does allow for a list of permitted uses and a list of conditional uses. In vehicle sales and service such as this for the fueling and the car wash, for example, are, under our zoning regulations, a conditional use permit within that zoning district.
Thank you.
So this resolution is only for combining those two lots into one at this point. And then we move on to the, the conditional use permit. And if that's the case, I really don't have see any problem with the, the CSM. And I'll send my comments for the conditional use permit when we get to that point.
Okay.
Anybody else on the conditional or on the CSM? So we'd be voting on a certified survey map, the CSM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So then R eighty-nine would also become an out of the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravallo, I can try to pull that one up for you quick. And then I'll send it back to Rodney after you make the motion.
All right. And this is our, ready?
Yep.
Okay. This is R eighty-nine, twenty twenty, approving a conditional use permit request by QuickTrip for an in-vehicle sales and service use, including outdoor display incidental, incidental to an indoor sales use at seventeen hundred East Main Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second on that one?
Second.
I didn't hear who was first.
Second.
Hi, Hirsch.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Who's on first, what's on second?
Not muted.
All right. So Rodney has the screen back. So we'll talk about the conditional use permit. Is there anything you want to cover, Phil, or do you want Rodney to run through this?
I, I think Rodney can run through it and then we can get to questions and comments.
Well, the condition use permit is just, just that as described is to allow for the in-vehicle sales and in-vehicle sales for the car wash and the fueling station and the incidental outdoor display for their items. This is just a layout that's being proposed for consideration. As the mayor indicated, there's questions and some continuing dialogue related to the site plan with the Plan Commission at this point. But what you can see is the access easement traverses the site and allows for access to lot two off to the right-hand side of the screen here. And it bisects the parcel there to accommodate that. The particular movement you see on the screen here shows how they would utilize to get their feeling vehicles to and from the site and be able to do that onsite. Including your packet is all the materials from the Plan Commission. I don't know how much in depth you want to go related to that. But it's really related to the, the use of the site.
And if I can.
Go ahead.
If I can, at this point, there's a lot of the concerns as, you know, folks spoke about were really site plan considerations and just ingress egress to this location, the ease of use of the easement, really, since it becomes a right in, right out only with that piece that I think Rodney at planning referred to that as a pork chop. That the thing that splits the easement where it intersects with N. Some other concerns that folks had were potential nuisance situation with hours of operation of something such as this, impact on the neighborhood. So aside from pedestrian access, safety concerns, traffic crossing. What if the easement, which still to me seems, you know, this, this, I might be going back into site plan and stuff again, but still seems extremely bizarre to me. And I don't think there really is an example of something like this that I'm aware of. I kind of sort of started thinking about the QuickTrip in McFarland on fifty-one and I forget what the name of that street is, but that's across from the state park. And I think everybody's passed numerous times, but that has a lot of different access points and does not have this easement. He's dissecting it. So there's just a few of my comments at this point.
Can I ask some questions at this point, Mayor, or should I wait?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Curious as to how close the residences are to this proposed new QuickTrip. What type of proximity do we have to the, if it were to be built, to the lot and to the improvements?
So on your screen now is the zoning map of the area. The parcels in question are, are in the center of the screen at the intersection, County M and fifty-one. The yellow are single family residential. And the darker color here is multifamily. And the kind of tan colored ones are, are actually duplexes or two twin homes.
Can you tell me, Rodney, since honestly, I'll be honest with everybody here, I can't see the damn screen. I do this on my phone and just look at the darn packet on my computer. So let me ask this. Can you give me an idea from your knowledge about how close we're talking about with respect to these residences, et cetera? And, you know, the people that are on the one street, I can't remember what it was Clarkson or whatever the heck it is, that were concerned about potential traffic, et cetera. I'm just curious what we have as far as the density and proximity of residential units to this proposed QuickTrip. And I know it may, may not be fair, but just a general idea of what we're talking about there.
Well, there is a single family home and a twin home across the street from the site. Other than that, although all the homes are farther distance than that from, from the site.
Okay. And with respect to lighting, et cetera, for this, for this improvement, are we, is there any concerns with respect to light pollution or whatever? Would that only be affecting those two homes across the street as far as the way the lights would be cast?
The lights have to meet the photometric requirements of our city ordinances. And they've been committed to do so. I have a foot candle at the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead. Alder Person Mayaski.
I'm looking at the planting plan. This, I had calls from residents in this area. And they were requesting that, you know, this is a pretty much of a cookie cutter franchise layout. And, and looking at their planting plan, it's incredibly weak in screening for, towards the residential site. They are aware, you know, those residents were aware that this was a commercial site. And they fully accept that. However, they're asking for some consideration as to some buffering. And I totally agree with them. I mean, this is pretty sparse, pretty sad. I would like to see, I would like to see a beefed up screening. I think that would help quite a bit as far as for at night and during the day. And I think we help minimize the impact on the neighborhood.
So Tom, you're saying, okay, so the retention pond is closest to the residential area. So you're saying around the retention pond area to create more of a screening for the residents across Cedar Brook?
Correct. Man, this is, this is, this is about as bare minimal as it gets, what you're looking at here.
I had a question. Probably maybe for Rodney. If we were to approve a conditional use permit, is it putting the cart before the horse, given the number of site plan issues, traffic and pedestrian? Or does that have to, does the conditional use have to come first before all these other really important details that seem pretty big have been worked out?
This might be a good time for Matt and I to, to remind the group about Act sixty-seven about the conditional use statutes that changed. I'm not to influence it, but if there's reasons to object to a conditional use application, it has to be substantial evidence to do so. I'm not disputing anything you're saying. I'm just suggesting that we have to be mindful of that requirement. Certainly the points that you're raising are certainly things that I know that the Plan Commission has been talking about with, with them. We're anticipating seeing the revised plans for the next Plan Commission meeting. You know, certainly that right now they're, they're interested in seeing that their use can get confirmed for this site for the in-vehicle sales and service. And that's what they're really seeking as a result of this request.
I just have one question as well.
Go ahead, Alder Boyzman.
Is there going to be heavy truck traffic in this area like diesel? And, and semis or large trucks? And I think right now the east side doesn't have a whole lot of that, but I'm wondering if the expansion is going to include more, more noise and from, from large vehicles?
Maybe Troy can speak to what they're trying to service here.
Sure. This is Troy Malazza of QuickTrip Real Estate. Yeah, this wouldn't be what we call a diesel facility like we'd have somewhere the interstate. There'd be inline diesel for pickup trucks and that type of thing, but the site itself isn't designed as a truck fueling center. That, that's not what we're proposing here. What we're proposing would be a replacement facility kind of for the modern age of what's been on the east side of Stoughton for the last thirty years and kind of a, a modern form and format. So short answer, no, we're not seeing this as a truck fueling facility.
Thank you.
So Rodney, on, on this side of maybe the, the the developer, Kenneth Lued, it still looks like the easement to lot two goes right through the center of this QuickTrip. And I just really have a concern about public safety when you have like a, almost like a road going through the center of a development that goes between your pumps and your store. To me, I think you're setting, it just, to me, I, I really have a problem with that design that I think it's, it could be a public safety issue if you have people coming from lot two running across this property to get to Highway N. I, I really would like to see that changed. and have a different outlet for lot two that they can't just run across this as it's like creating a road in the middle of a a gas station, which I really have a problem with.
I'm actually, i- if I can, I'm I'm going to piggyback on one of my problems with this is, and this might again be site plan things, but since Regina brought it up is truck access to lot two where the fasten all is in that mall through this easement, and especially with the the thing referred to as the pork chop there, I just don't the with the right in right out of a semi using that access just looks undoable to me. I I don't quite get how that's going to work. So I I think that's pretty much impossible, the way that this is set up. On on top of the fact that this then puts a whole lot of traffic on to Cedarbrook because anybody that's coming out of this lot that wants to go into town has to go out Cedarbrook and then turn left from Cedarbrook on to N. Because they were not going to be using that that pork chop section right there. So that's excuse me, that's going to increase the stress at the intersection of Cedarbrook and N. Much less, what is it? Is it? And also at Stony Ridge, which is the the street that exits that comes onto Cedarbrook, right across the street from the north driveway of the QuickTrip. So this is gonna there's going to be major traffic impact.
I also want to add that not living very far from this, the there is a hill that drops off significantly as I believe one of our residents talked about. There, there are some sightline vision with turning left onto N. I I have some big concerns as well as I just want to add a lot of constituents contacted me as well. And I bike through there a lot, heading out of the town biking and may I ask, at the planning committee meeting, what was discussed around safety at that meeting? And can anyone fill in why the state is not talking about any access to Highway 51?
I can speak to, the state has refused access to Highway 51 on this planted area for many different applications, including the fast and all site when that was first being built, there was or being considered for construction. The DOT was adamant about restricting traffic on to.
That was a sidebar?
Try it again, Rodney.
I'm sorry. Did then answer your question about, you know, I'm not the DOT, but I know that there's been numerous requests to have access on to 51 from this air, this planted area, including even the daycare that's under construction on the other side of 51. You recall Casey looking at site there, they refused access and access point to 51 as well. So it seems consistent with their practice to not allow access to 51.
And and they're quoting as their basis or, I mean, what what did they specifically say outside of we're not granting? I mean, is that all that you get from them? Because it seems logical. There is a stop. I I think the stoplight is going to get really creative anyway. Concerns about turning left, concerns about lack of sidewalks, not to bring up sidewalks again, but lack of them. There there aren't sidewalks at that intersection. And so with this new QuickTrip and people possibly having access to it, people pedestrians as well as cars. I I have some major concerns, but I'm wondering why the state is is not at least giving us reasons why.
I think distance between the lights and the driveway. Because if vehicles get backed up, they can get backed up to the point where you can't even get in and out of the driveways. I think that was part of the conversations that I've heard in the past. That it's just the distance between access and the light, especially when Casey's wanted it on 51. That was one of the issues. And I assume that it might be similar on N, although N is more is a county road. It's not a state highway. And I don't know if the rules are the same or not. I don't really have a lot of insight on that. I can tell you the the Plan Commission did express some concerns about some of the things that Phil described as far as traffic flow, the point that Regina made about people literally walking across a basically a road, even though it's an easement or a driveway to get from the gas pump building. I know that's a concern that I still have. And we're hoping that they'll come back with a reconfiguration plan that does address some of the pedestrian safety as well as some of the vehicular safety concerns that have been brought to our attention.
With that said, I guess I in good conscience cannot approve this tonight until I see something that addresses a lot more of those concerns. I just I the public safety, like I've always said, is paramount and to have an easement or a road cutting where people are going to be trying to pay from the pump or going to the to use a restroom or buy something is it's just unsettling. It's to me and and not having the issue with the the site with the hill. I I guess I I'm going to vote no on this until those changes are made.
I think what we should try to do with this conditional use permit, and Matt, you can certainly jump in is we're in a strange position with the state law to just say no. I think we have to look for things that we would want to make part of the condition. Is that how you would put it, Matt?
Well, we we definitely are in a much more complicated place, given given how the laws change regarding conditional use permits. It seems one of the things, it seems to me that the concerns I'm hearing relate primarily to traffic issues, both ingress and egress to and from the site and then traffic circulation within the site. Honestly, I'm not certain whether or not I'm not confident that that I know whether it would be appropriate to say, look, those can be addressed or should be addressed as part of the conditional use permit process, or those should simply be site plan issues. I'm not sure what the answer is. But rather than voting, you know, yes or no, if if the council believes that it needs more information, more evidence relating to these concerns, then I think that's a better decision to say let's either remand this to the Plan Commission for further fact development regarding these traffic issues or table it and get the information presented at the council level. You know, under Act 67, some of the basic nuts and bolts are this, this is on the conditional use permit at least. I call it something akin to a quasi judicial determination where whatever decision is made has to be based on evidence and related to the standards and the ordinance. And you know, I, one of the things I I asked Rodney during the chat, you know, has a traffic impact analysis been done? Apparently, that that hasn't been done yet. I'm not sure if that would get you the information you need to figure this out, but it sounds like I would go in the direction of saying, where do you feel that you need more information? And and try and get that information rather than voting no.
All right, I will take that advice and I'd like to send this back to the planning to get better traffic information and a possible solution with respect to the road going in through, cutting through the middle of of the proposed plan. And a number of the other issues that the constituents have outlined in our email that was sent to us earlier today.
Okay.
I also I also would like to add, just add in that same in that same flavor that I I think these are some unique times. Perhaps neighborhooders weren't fully aware. Though I I I see some comments and some people attending these meetings as I've read through these notes very carefully. But I I want to put out there that that 300 feet clearly we've heard from people who are a lot farther than 300 300 feet away from this development. And as I look at these potential proposed traffic patterns, I see people turning right onto Cedarbrook and then that next street where all of those duplexes are and then finding there. I see lots of people impacted. I, not that this is nowhere near the scope of Cal Park West, but when we at least try to listen and get people together to understand each other and and talk about the issue and just try to understand it as it's in the works. I guess I'd like to add that maybe QuickTrip and or us as a body perhaps try to help arrange something like that right now because I think we've had a lot of constituents weighing in, and I think more understanding is needed.
So how do we word that into a motion? I heard some things. And then we should either set a date or give the, well, we can't really tell the Plan Commission what to do, but we can certainly make some suggestions. And obviously, we have some Alders that are on the Plan Commission that are are, you know, hearing this. So, you know, I I think if you could at least give them some direction, if they don't have enough already, Phil or Tom. You know, do you feel like you have enough direction, Ozzy?
I do.
Yeah, I think we're we're doing good, especially Gene's point of giving notice to people, especially one point that I didn't analyze enough until just recently, like over the last bunch of days, was that Stony Brook for Meadow Drive, Eastwood Drive and Stony Ridge. Like Stony Ridge is the only way out of that neighborhood for those folks. And if that the the access to the QuickTrip, the only way in and out of the QuickTrip, if you're going north back into town, is that Stony Brook right there. That's just I just can't see how it's not just going to be a mess. So if yeah, if we can notice all those people on Stony Ridge, Eastwood and Meadow, I think that would be
This is can, this is Matt. Can I wait in for a second?
Sure.
Yeah. So when it goes back to the Plan Commission, if it does, if if the if the council sends us back to the Plan Commission to evaluate the traffic issues, the point I would make, and I did make a presentation of the Plan Commission on kind of the new world we're in on conditional use permits. So I mean, I think it's important to get some actual evidence that addresses this. So from a traffic and engineering standpoint, is that a workable arrangement or not? I mean, would people have the ability to get in and out of Stony Ridge in a in a reasonable and appropriate and safe way without access to the QuickTrip or not, based on, you know, an actual analysis by a qualified professional who can provide evidence that we can rely on? One of the things that Act 67 says is explicitly that it's not allowable to base decisions on speculative comments by anyone. So just the fact that somebody thinks something is not enough without some more to support that conclusion. And so I guess what the you'll have to plant, you'll have to have, there'll have to be some discussion about how to get there, how to develop the factual information needed to know whether there's an issue or not.
Sounds like we need a traffic study.
Yeah, it does sound like address the traffic, the pedestrian safety. You mentioned screening. I don't know if there's any standards for that, but certainly we could see if there's anything out there for this type of building. And then was there anything else? Because we have to get this in the
Mayor, I think that I think that we need, we need to take heart on the fact that constituents in the in the neighborhood should have input as many public meetings, maybe presentations by QuickTrip as we can get. Because I don't want, I don't want anybody to be surprised on this like we did earlier tonight.
The other thing that I was going to mention, we talked a little bit about pedestrian traffic, but I know that they, we have a lot of people in that are utilizing the current QuickTrip that walk. Don't have cars. There's a lot of fair amount of low income housing. And so there will be people wanting to walk. And so I'm just trying to figure out how they're going to cross 51. So when we're talking about traffic, I want to talk not only about in in the complex, but getting to and from because people are going to walk over there.
And and Lisa, we we bike along there and frequently see people walking by that billboard where there's just a path in the field. There's a lack of a lot of sidewalks. I I really didn't mean that in jest, but it did have a histrionic nature to it when I said it because there are very few sidewalks and here we're developing as well as the concerns of the traffic. I agree.
Okay, so I think I heard Council President Hirsch making a motion to postpone this and to ask the Plan Commission to take a look at these issues.
Correct. The the traffic study, the walkability, the public safety, the respect to the access that goes right through the constituents not having ample access to input. And lastly, was the screen ability of the site on Cedarbrook by the retention pond. Is there a way to screen it off so the people that live across Cedarbrook are not inundated with, you know, now this gas station?
A second.
If it hasn't been seconded, I will second.
I think all the person Reeves seconded it. Hey, did you get something or could you and Matt work on something?
I got it.
Okay. Does everybody understand what we're trying to do here?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, so.
I did, I did, I did add that I think we should have a public hearing on this, public meeting.
Yeah, I put that in as constituent input, so hopefully that covers it.
But I but I'm thinking that planning could have its own public meeting on it.
Mayor?
I think we already had one.
We had two, Mayor.
Two.
And, you know, I just sorry to interrupt, but, you know, a couple of those neighbors has actually gone door to door to all 57 neighbors down there. So I, you know, the lack of the lack of notice to the residents, I'm sure that, you know, they've been gone physically door to door as Mrs. Clark indicated. And we did wind up doing two, not one, but two public here springs on this, both February and the first part of May. So
Sorry, I'm just wondering who's speaking. I'm sorry, I'm not certain who's speaking right now.
That was Tom Adson. He's a realtor.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize. I just didn't know who it was who was speaking. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Alder Mieske.
Look, what we're looking for here is some empirical evidence.
Um, look, what we're looking for here is some empirical evidence as to to grant or not to grant a a CSM to this property. I can't be done until we have further evidence and has by state law has nothing to do unfortunately with what the residents in the area want, has more to do with uh, solid data that shows reasons for denying or accepting the CSM. It's plain and simple. It can't be done until we go through.
Conditional use permit, not the CSM, but.
Yeah, commission, whatever. Um, so I'm calling the question.
Okay, so yeah, I think sounds like the Plan Commission members have enough information. So, uh, we'll take a vote to postpone, send this back to plan. Um, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. All right, Jamin promised these next two would go really quickly. We're on number fifteen, I believe, R ninety of twenty twenty. And that comes from uh Finance, Alder Person Schumacher.
R ninety twenty twenty authorizing the City of Stoughton Director of Finance, Comptroller to act on the behalf of the City of Stoughton to accept the twenty twenty section fifty-three ten grant in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and move forward with the process of purchasing an additional accessible van for the shared ride taxi program. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person, was it Boersma?
Boersma. Riley. Oh.
Okay.
It's me.
Holly will figure it out. She's good like that.
Holly, it was me.
All right, I'm gonna flip it over to Jamin. Um, any questions on this? I think this is something we did maybe last year. And it's basically just a grant that our our investment is minimal, comes out of CIP funds that we budgeted. And tell them what I missed, Jamin.
Nope, that's about it. It was budgeted in the CIP. Um, you know, we'll basically get a thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollar um rear accessible van for our shared ride taxi program for eight thousand dollars out of pocket for the city.
All right, any questions or comments? Here are none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Uh, next item, R ninety-one comes from Finance, Alder Person Schumacher.
R ninety-one twenty twenty, City of Stoughton declared a state of emergency due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This resolution suspends interest and penalties for late real property tax payments so long as the city receives full property tax payment by October one, twenty twenty. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Um, you wanna walk us through this one, Brett or Jamin?
Um, you know, you can see this one is based off of the the State Act one eighty-five. Um, where the municipalities can suspend interest and and penalties for real estate payments, and then that coincided with the emergency order number twelve. So ultimately, we're doing what what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, basically, the state law says that we can do this as long as the county uh authorizes the resolution and the local municipality does the same. I believe the county has already approved theirs. And so we're asking for the same to to give people the flexibility if they want to take advantage of this. Anything we missed, Jamin?
No, that's about it. Um, now, I apologize for a couple of these coming from Finance to Council immediately, but obviously timings, timing is of the essence with this one. I think the county wanted a response back by June fifteenth. Um, there's really no impact to the city. Um, there's a little bit, there'll be a little bit of delay in the final cash flow. Um, but the the city will still be made whole on their tax collections. There will just be a delay in it.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Sid.
Uh, do do special assessments uh apply to this too?
No, this is, this is just tax levy.
This is for property tax bill. Uh, the Finance Committee um met earlier tonight and they did talk about um some options as far as um potentially trying to defer some special assessments. And Jamin's team will continue to work on that. They've been working on that for a while now. And and they are putting some different options together and they were looking for a little direction, which I believe they received tonight at Finance. So you'll probably see something on that at a future meeting.
So that can't be incorporated tonight?
No, this is a separate item because this is property tax. And it's, it's based on a state statute that says a municipality in the county um would have to do this or on the special assessment, that would only be a municipal thing. So we have to do that one on our own.
But I think we should, I think we should, we should address that.
Yeah, if you have any ideas on that, certainly shoot Jamin an email and he'll incorporate your ideas into what they're working on.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for bringing this forward, Jamin, uh swiftly, so that we can give people more flexibility.
Yeah, um, I I would take credit, but it's it's not mine. We're, I mean, we're just following the county's lead on this. Um, some municipalities actually implemented it earlier contingent on the county, you know, passing this, so.
Glad we're doing it. Thank you.
Yeah, and a lot of this, you know, comes with our conversations with county officials, including our county board member, Tana Weth, and and then County Executive Precy. So a lot of these initiatives, they've been really good at communicating to us what they're working on, so we can piggyback on them. So, you know, they get a lot of the credit and, you know, if we do our part, um, it's a win all around. So, um, any other questions on this one? Here are none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion by Mieske, a second.
Second.
Reeves, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Or adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.